City Council is hereby convened as noticed by publication in a newspaper of general circulation, the news press on September 2nd, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pursuant to Section 286.0118, subsection 8, Florida statutes, at this time, I would like to request that we adjourn to executive session so that I and the other attorney for record, David Theriak, of the City of Bonita Springs, Florida, in the case of Three Hard-Working American Landholdings LLC v. City of Bonita Springs and Lee County Civil Case Number 21-CA-004285, may receive the city council's advice regarding strategy and settlement to be best used in the case. This entire session will be recorded by a court reporter and the transcript will be filed with the city clerk and available to the public at the conclusion of the litigation discussed today. In addition to the mayor and city council members in attendance, the following persons will attend the executive session: myself, Derek Rooney, City Attorney, David Theriak, Theriak in Spain, City Manager Arlene Hunter. And at this time, I would ask the mayor and each council member in attendance, please identify him or herself for the record, starting with Councilmember Corumba.
Amy Corumba, District 1.
Jesse Purdon, District 2.
Laura Carr, District 3.
Chris Corey, District 4.
Mike Gibson, District 5.
Fred Forbes, District 6.
Mayor Rick Steinmeier.
Mayor, okay. At the conclusion of the executive session, the city council reconvened the public hearing and the mayor will end the session.
Okay, I estimate that this executive session will take approximately 30 minutes. At this time, we will recess the public portion of today's meeting and convene the executive session. Thank you. Request a motion to adjourn.
Before we move to adjourn, I do have to, I do request that you make a motion regarding the settlement offer.
I make a motion to deny the settlement offer.
Second.
Go ahead and do a roll call. Amy Corumba?
Aye.
Laura Carr?
Aye.
Chris Corey?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Mike Gibson?
Aye.
Jesse Purdon?
Aye.
Fred Forbes?
Aye.
Okay, Forbes. And then I also would request a selection of a member of the board to serve at the arbitration set for October 31st.
I propose Chris Corey, second.
All right.
Do we vote?
Roll call, Fred Forbes?
Aye.
Jesse Purdon?
Aye.
Mike Gibson?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Chris Corey?
Aye.
Laura Carr?
Aye.
Amy Corumba?
Aye.
All right, and with that, you're free to adjourn.
Okay, I guess we're off and running. Are we gonna start this next?
No.
No, no, no.
We have to wait till 5:30, right?
Right, so we are adjourned.
Okay. 2022 invocation. Oh, yes Reverend, please give us some words of inspiration.
Thank you. Let us stand.
All right, if you could.
Let us pray together. Father, we thank you, Lord, for your goodness and mercy that's upon us every single day. And Lord, we ask your wisdom, your guidance, your direction to be upon this city council this evening, the agenda that's before them. We pray, God, that you would give them the right eye to look at things, a prophetic eye to see things in the future, to make decisions, Lord, that will benefit our community. We pray for our first responders, we pray for the officers, God, we pray your hand upon the men and women who serve in that capacity. We thank you, God, for their service here in our community. Bring them home safe. And Lord, we pray for America today, God, we pray, God, that you, as the elections are coming up, end of this year, Lord, we pray that you would give us men and women with some common sense and that you would help us, God, put the right people in, that we can move this country forward, and we appreciate and we love what you have done here in our country. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance on the count of three. One, two. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yes, Debbie, have a roll call.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Here.
Councilman Purdon?
Here.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Here.
Councilman Corey?
Here.
Councilman Gibson?
Here.
Councilman Forbes?
Here.
Okay, I think we can approve the, yes, I think we can approve the agenda for tonight.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Wait, wait, wait. Public comment?
Agenda. I just had one question or a comment on that. I won't ask to rearrange the agenda because I know we don't love that, but, and I'm gonna have to leave a little early today, I would just ask that you still do my item at the end, and it has to do with the low sum letter.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, staff is comfortable with where I was at on it, so I don't need that.
We'll take care of that, Jesse, thank you.
All right.
All right, mayors welcome. You're all welcome, I'm glad you're here, the people home on the TV, say hi, you're all part of this community, so bear with us and we'll do the best we can for our community. Public comment now, anybody have a public comment on anything on the agenda, please?
Hi, I'm Ron George from the Little Hickory Island area, and I just wanted to make a really quick comment, hopefully quick, on item 8B relating to the Imperial Crossing, aka Bamboo Village project. And in reviewing the proposed ground lease agreement by Baron Collier to the City of Bonita Springs for the project parcel, I have a few brief comments. In general, I'm very pleased with, pleased that the vacant Bamboo Village property may be put to good use as a result of the lease. Although I have, although I don't think the lease agreement and the proposed design will have many of the features that were first proposed to the residents by Baron Collier, it is likely time to accept the current design plan. I know we all feel this site is one of the most valuable parcels in the downtown area, but reality tells us that likely it doesn't have the same lure to developers. This project and the rooftop at Riverside Food Truck Park would be two new attractions to the downtown area, and hopefully they will provide the critical mass to attract other development to the area without endangering the city's charm. I am, however, concerned that the lease agreement, if I understand it correctly, requires the city to reimburse Baron Collier for the costs related to the public areas, both for construction and for ongoing maintenance. Yet it appears from the draft lease that the public areas will be administered by a maintenance association composed of three members, two of which are chosen by the tenant and only one from the city. As the city is providing the land and financing, this doesn't quite seem to make sense to me. I don't pretend to understand what financial benefits the lease will bring to the city and rent, impact fees, and taxes, but at a base lease of $99,000 per year, it could, in worst-case scenario, take about 19 years for the city to get any money from the lease. Don't get me wrong, I am in favor of the development, I just think the lease terms should be reviewed further. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Oh, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff. For the record, Dwight Essman, Paradise Road area. I also want to speak briefly on the proposed lease by Baron Collier. Well, it seems like the lease terms favor Baron Collier, it may be because they don't really see this as a very profitable project. Is that because it's not the right project for this location? I want to thank Arlene and Derek for scheduling this information session before any vote. Hope any final lease agreement will have a couple of weeks for the public to review before any vote. I also hope that we will hear a professional appraisal on this property. I have a feeling that many of you are underestimating the value of it, since the price of real estate has jumped so dramatically over the past couple of years. Some facts: in the past 12 months, two large vacant lots on Old 41 have sold. 27-583 Old 41 at Abernathy sold for 1.2 million. It's about .7 of an acre, so the value per acre is $1,742,400. In February of 2022, the property at 27-625 Old 41 at Hampton sold for 1.8 million. It's a little over one acre, so the value per acre is about 1.745 million. Basically, these two lots that are not on the river sold for about 1,007,000 per acre. I'm not a professional appraiser, but it seems to me that the 5.3 acres of the BVP could be worth close to 10 million or more. I look forward to hearing what an appraiser says. But the point is not to raise money for the city, the point is to do something that will jumpstart, kickoff, ignite, whatever term you want to use, encourage more business in the downtown corridor, and to give citizens good access to the river. Unfortunately, this project will not achieve those goals. Apartments are not the best option. Within the next few days, I'll present to you and Baron Collier my ideas of what will work. Perhaps I'll share them with the public. And if everyone will keep an open mind and be willing to keep working on this until we have it right, then Baron Collier, the city, and the people will win in the long run. Now, I also wanted to say something about Matt and congratulate him for 10 years here. I don't know where he is, but you guys should pay him extra money for dealing with me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next?
Yes, Alex Grant, formerly with U. Okay, two points. One, on the Imperial project, I wanted to know if a, an outside attorney had looked at the lease agreement, in other words, besides the city attorney, special attorney, on this. And two, I wondered if a CPA outside this area had looked over the lease agreement and carefully. If not, I'd recommend my own CPA, who have I, who I have dealt with for the past, since His name is James M. Guallario from Naples, Florida. Very reputable CPA, very knowledgeable. I'd certainly recommend him as a consultant to you. That's one thing. So, I also was concerned, what, 8250 per month they would pay us in lease money, or what, 100,000 a year, or something like that? And also, another thing that I'm extremely, as a former volunteer firefighter, concerned about, if any, are any residential areas in that complex, are there at least 150 feet away from the riverbank due to flooding like Irma, et cetera, which we have? And that's number one. Number two, I'd like to discuss about the rail situation, and we have here, I had somewhere here in all the paperwork, I have it here, there was a plan for rails and trails. In other words, the rail is, would remain where it is for Amtrak commuter rail, and you could always put a 10 or 20-foot bike path to complement the rail. It would be a symbiotic relationship for rail and trail. And that was what was agreed to in the June meeting that was attended by good many several hundred people in Astero at that community workshop by the MPO. And that's what was the overwhelming favorable result, to do, to leave the rail for future rail service, which we need, a passenger rail service, of course, freight too, but passenger especially, and, and we can use the trail to it. Let's do it.
Thank you, Alex. Anyone else, please? Okay, I guess we're up to Nick Casalaguarda.
Casalaguarda.
He's got a tricky name, but I could.
Casalaguarda.
Casalaguarda, well, getting better.
I'm sorry.
He has a little presentation for us, he's gonna answer all the questions that were brought up, and this is kind of special because the people said they didn't know enough about this, so we're gonna give him some information.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Mr. Mayor and city councilmembers, thank you for having us here tonight. I'm gonna just cover a little bit of history and a couple, couple items with the lease and, you know, answer your question. I'm gonna try and be fairly brief, but touch on the key points that we've talked about over the past 14 months. It's hard to believe, when I circle that date, this was from the original presentation, that it's been almost 14 months since we've been in front of you the first time. So, it's been a while, and we talked about, instead of Imperial 41, Imperial Crossing, and if you look, this is what was the scheme that was in front of you when you selected us. And after going through due diligence and after two public meetings, when you look at what's changed, there's a lot more green space and buildings and public park over there. Some of that's related to the flowway that's there, some of that's related to the public comment and feedback about, could we eliminate a couple of the buildings and provide some more public park space? So, I'll go back one more time if it lets me and just let it transition over. You'll see the changes in the building location and the green space that's there. So, quite a few changes since the first time we presented to you and along the way since we provided you the renderings in June of this year. A little project history, and again, I'll be, I'll be brief, but this discussion took back in May. And in June, you considered a letter along from us, a proposal, as well as other proposals that came in front of you. And there was a lot of feedback from the city council, so you hired a facilitator, which I thought was very interesting, Kenneth Tinkler, if you guys all remember that one night, when we went through the whole exercise of the do's and don'ts. And I was quite impressed, and I think out of all the list items you have here that you listed, probably the, one of the only ones that I don't think we touched upon was the meeting space and a structure. And I think that was Councilwoman Corumba that said, could we have a meeting space there? And that was difficult to incorporate, but everything else, I think we touched on as part of all the public comments and everything else you've asked for on this list. In July, you ranked, and then you selected. In October, we completed a survey. November 2nd, we had our first public meeting at the library. November 3rd, you approved the interim agreement, did the bulkhead wall evaluation, and I'll tell you, since this project started, if you've, any experience in construction, construction costs have gone up about 30 to 35 percent. So, when you look at the bulkhead wall and things that are in this project, it's amazing to see how much they've gone up. March, we had the onsite public meeting, on a Saturday afternoon, a lot of people showed up. We updated the schematic design for the flowway that was there, finally did the geotech report, and then the architectural update. In June, we sent a letter to the city manager, and then we've asked to meet with all the city councilors. And last month, or at the end of July, we had a chance to sit down with all of you with your staff, and we listened to all the feedback that you had, and we made little tweaks, again, based on what we've heard from all of you. Now, we're here tonight for the preliminary lease discussion, we have had a call with Derek, Arlene, with our lease team, both of them pointed out some things they want us to clarify and change. That's what will happen over the next couple of weeks. In principle, I think we're at a good point with your staff, and I think they're having it reviewed by an outside person, but our goal now is just to do cleanup on a few items that are there, unless you have items that you specifically want to call out. We're tentatively scheduled for October 5th. As soon as that is approved, we go into design and permitting. We plan to submit our permits right at the first of the year, and your special assemblage plan, that process will take about eight to 12 months, along with permitting along the river, and then we would start construction in Q1, Q2 of 2024. These are the summary of the business terms, and the first one obviously is important. We've received feedback that Councilman Corey, you were concerned about just a percentage rent. So, we tucked in a base rent along with the percentage rent in the lease, and we talked with Arlene and Derek about how to calculate that. So, the city would always get a base rent and then, but always get 2.5 percent of the gross revenue. So, even in fluctuating years, you would be, you would get that base rent. The thing that we're gonna, we're gonna change in the new version, just calculated every 10 years to smooth it out for both of us. So, we'll set the base rent, and then we look back a year, and whatever our gross revenue was, we'll pay you 2.5 percent of the gross revenue minus what the base rent was. So, you're always guaranteed revenue coming in, even though we think historically apartment projects throughout southwest Florida have never gone to the point of being defunct, especially in a location like this. But we covered that as well, too. The books are auditable, so you'll be able to look at the gross revenue that comes in, you'll have open access to the books, so your finance people can take a look at it. This is the tough one, tenant completes public improvements upfront. We made a promise, we capped it at 1.9, we're already at about 2.7. The concern we have during a due diligence period over the next 90 days is your seawall, the environmental, and one of the exhibits will call it out for you, and where your water and sewer main are located on Old 41. When they widen 41, they actually place part of it in the bamboo parcel, so that's right next to the building where we're at. So, that's one that is gonna come up for a pretty intense review by our team over the next 90 days as we go into the next phase of this. Obviously, we pay property taxes on the improvements, and the city parkland obviously would not. What was different about the way we originally proposed it was we would lease all the property and then just give you the right to use the park area. After conversations with the staff, they actually came up with the idea of, well, if you, we'd like to have control more of the park, and we said, well, sure, and you'll see in one of the exhibits, that we're only gonna lease around the buildings and structures, and that we'll do a common area maintenance association to maintain the property. I don't think we have a problem putting two people on staff for that, or making it 50/50 or coming up with that. That's, our goal is both to maintain the property in impeccable condition. So, that, one of the gentlemen spoke about that a little bit. So, you would retain control of the parkland, and then we would set up an association to maintain it. So, some of the exhibits that really drive the lease as well, too, we talked about the project parcel, that's from the survey, the highlighted area is what we're leasing. You can see the remnants below it of what is underneath used to be the trailer park. All that needs to be cleaned up, that's part of when we do clean up the plat entitlement with you guys going through the special assemblage project. And then there's the tract on the top right of your screen, where Mr. Mayor, you and some of the other council members asked us to look at a parking lot. We'll look at that when we're in design, and we mentioned to Matt and Arlene, if through that process, you want us to permit that with you to do a parking lot, we can certainly do that. We just didn't get into it, that would be a city issue to permit that lot. But you got a lot of title to clean up on this piece as we go forward to develop it. And then the conceptual site plan that was laid out, we showed it to you a little bit earlier, but everything tucks against the road, and you've got significant park space on both sides of the river and along the river and wrapping around. And a discussion, this is what came out of the lease space. So, the, I'll call it the pink area is what we would ground lease, and everything in green that wraps pretty much around both projects and the park and the riverfront, we wouldn't lease, but we would agree to maintain it with you. So, it would become city property, it stays city property, but you guys would program it, and we would maintain it in conjunction with you. The preliminary parking exhibit identifies the, what I'll call the blue that's next to the buildings as dedicated for the buildings, the red for the commercial, the bright green that's next to the city bathrooms as city spaces, and then along Veltz and Wilson, there's a bunch of blue spaces that we're adding in the right of way. That was part of the community concerns, to make sure there's still adequate parking around there. So, there is a net increase in parking from what's there today. The renderings were important, I think everybody wanted us to make a commitment that what we put on paper, we would build, so the renderings are part of the exhibit to the lease, as long as we stay generally consistent with this. We've met what I'll call the administrative review of architectural requirements. And this is, again, these are all backup documents to the lease. And that's it, it's a brief presentation, we kept the terms pretty simple, the attorneys right now are just trading comments back and forth, and I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
We can't expect you to build us a park, can we?
We are building.
Paying for it.
You're giving us a credit of 1.9 for the improvements along the waterfront, for the park area, the park bathroom concession stands, the park on both sides, the parking that's in the front. We haven't asked for the full seawall payment, and we haven't asked for the relocation of the water and sewer main. And during that 90-day period, we're gonna find out what that actually costs, and that's one item that I call an open item in due diligence, because they could be pretty significant costs.
Nick, what's the acreage of the land that you are leasing? Do you know off the top?
I don't, I can, I can give you an approximation, and we can, the idea was to come up with that when we had the final special assemblage plan. I'd say probably a little over three acres of what's there, three, three and a half.
How did you arrive at the 99,000 as a base rent?
We looked at what 2% would be of the first year and prorated it a little bit and said, okay, it generates, you had asked about having a base rent, so we looked at 2%, we put 2.5 in the lease, so 2% was the first year's kind of rent base floor. And then the goal, Councilman Corey, is every 10 years, we look back at the 10-year prior, we look at the 2% average, and we up the base rent to the new base rent. So, you'd always get that in there. But you're always gonna get 2.5 percent of the gross rent, no matter what.
Do you have an idea what the property tax is gonna be on your above-the-ground improvements?
No, not off the top of my head, Mr. Mayor. I provided a document.
Can you sell these as condominiums someday in the future?
No, sir. They're, they're as part of the special assemblage plan, they'll be committed to rental units.
Okay, any other questions, Laura?
Amy. I have questions for the staff. Are we gonna get a report from CBRE and the accountant?
Currently, CBRE is reviewing it. They've also, part of the scope of services for that is they're offering individual meetings with council. I think there was some additional information that they were just gathering together.
Yes.
And then also, our accountants are reviewing as well, and they'll be able to provide a letter, a statement of how that would be accounted for within our, within our reviews.
So, what is the commitment date? Is there, we're not making any decisions today.
No, we're looking to bring this back to the council on October 5th. And so, what I'll, what I'll share right now, based on Nick's conversations and some of the public comment, is I'm now on version four or five of the lease that you have in front of you and trading, and so, and for Mr. Grant, in addition to myself, I've got at least four other attorneys on my team looking at it, I've got construction specials working on it for the lien provisions, I've got a bankruptcy trustee working on it for foreclosure proceedings, or if there's any issues with the mortgage on the property, and I've got a commercial real estate attorney looking at the lease terms. In addition to that, CBRE's, I'll say legal experts have looked at it as well and given some of their comments to me. You know, I stopped counting how much public land I have been involved in the acquisition or disposition somewhere after a billion dollars, so I'll tell you that the lease is a fairly standard commercial lease. What I would ask the council to really focus on is the business terms of that. So, the business terms are what's gonna drive the decision that Baron Collier has to make, and it's gonna make sure, I need to get the direction from you so that I can put, make sure that those terms are properly reflected in the language of the document.
And then on the 5th of October, then if everything goes right, then they got 90 days due diligence, is that it?
They're asking for 90 days due diligence, we've, the due diligence provisions that are in here are gonna be reduced a little bit, we've talked about that, so the entitlement dates, the due diligence, some of that language is gonna be changing, it's gonna be reduced because obviously over the last 14 months, they've been doing some level of due diligence, and there's a few additional things that they want to check off before we get to sort of like an as-is condition, turn over the property. CBRE will be looking at it for a couple of different things. So, they're looking at it, this is, the Bonita market, downtown market, is an unproven So they're looking at it, this is, the Benita market, downtown market, is an unproven market. So it's very difficult for them to say, this is what the, the rent should be or whatever. So they're gonna be looking at it for the purposes of a pro forma. And they're gonna say, you know, given what they're improving, what the quality of the improvement, so they'll be talking to them about construction methods, you know, is this, you know, it's not, it's not gonna be a stick built, it's gonna be, you know, concrete. What's the form of the building? What's the lifespan? So they can sort of back up the numbers that Baron Collier is providing for the rent, say, yes, you can assume you're gonna get rents hopefully in this range. So that, that way you have some, some basis on which to rely on for what's presented. So that'll be part of what they're doing.
And I understand that we're gonna have an opportunity to meet one-on-one with Baron Collier, but I have some like clarification issues. It's not appropriate for meetings, you know, just to make me understand what the words are. And that's it. I don't have anything really, I think.
So Jane will be reaching out to see if, number one, if you'd like an individual meeting with Baron Collier, if you would like a meeting with CBRE or a call, a virtual call with our accountants as well.
Okay.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd just like to say I'm thrilled. I'm so excited and that Baron Collier is gonna be doing this project. This isn't the best description that, you know, depicts what I'm talking about, but the other ones, it is so fabulous. I personally am very, very excited. And you guys are more concerned about your reputation. So we know you'll do it right.
We're, we're a little nervous, quite frankly, about the pricing, but we're, we're here. We're not walking away. I, I did have one promise we made during, to you during the one-on-ones, the north tract where their open park is, we were gonna put a bathroom in the building. So I, I wanna put that on the record. We, it was one of my notes that, and it's just to make sure you knew about that.
Yeah, but you have public bathrooms for citizens.
Yes.
With special parking in front.
Yes.
I mean, again, you go, as a company, you've gone out of your way, at least I believe, to make a really appealing downtown that hopefully works for both parties.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have anything else for Nikki here?
I just wanna clarify that we did discuss some of the elements of the park and we've got a follow-up call with Nicole Perino as well. So there, there is some things we're still working through, some, some asks as well.
We've gotten comments from Arlene and Derek. So our goal is by Monday to turn back a, a turn to Derek, let them look at it, probably jump on a conference call, clean up what other items we have over the next two or three weeks. And by the time we get to October 5th, have a clean lease in front of you.
Very good.
Yeah.
Okay, Jesse, all right, thank you, Nick.
You're welcome. It's good to see you all again.
Okay. Councilman Jesse Pardon would like to change the agenda a little bit here because he has to leave early. So I, I said it would be all right. I hope it's all right with everybody that he.
Just, I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor, and I will be quick. I know we don't like to change up the agenda, but the short version is you all should have seen the emails that came from staff regarding comment to Army Corps of Engineers from the county, from Cape Coral and from Sanibel, and additionally the one from Congressman Donalds, all related to Lake Okeechobee release schedule. It's now that part of the portion of Lowes and where they're taking commentary here on the, on the EIS portion of this. So all of the municipalities in southwest Florida have a vested interest in ensuring that those, those things are heard by the Army Corps. So my recommendation, if you all are open to it, would be to consider looking at Mayor Holly Smith's letter. I think it was, of the three, from the city side, I think it's the most appropriate. One was written from county level. Holly's was a little bit less direct, but it was a city level. And the Congressman's obviously was a little bit different because where he sits at the table with the Army Corps as well. So I think it would be prudent for us to write the letter. But I'd like you guys to discuss it. I mean, it's gonna happen with or without us, but we have almost 60,000 people in the water is one of the most important issues. So getting on the record to try and ensure that we get the things that we need for this coast, I, in my opinion, is a really good idea. So I would appreciate y'all considering that, so.
Yeah, I'm in favor of sending a letter. We could just let staff, you know, use the material that's presented here and they'll put it together to reflect the, the consensus that we've expressed many times at the, from the, on the council. I'm in favor of that.
Thank you.
Yes. Do we need a motion?
I mean, the sooner the better. The, the county approved theirs today at their meeting. So theirs is gonna go out, the Congressman's went out yesterday. The city of Sanibel also went out yesterday, I believe. So everybody's is going out this week. So I mean, the sooner we could get it out, the better.
I think we could, staff can work on a draft and circulate it like we normally do unless we see any drastic changes that we would understand that was consensus and then we could have it for the mayor's signature.
And there's, you'll see the, the second part of the email was actually the changes to the water plan. So it's specific things that will be beneficial to us, but you'll see when, when you look into that. But with that being said, I don't know if we need a motion or not, or.
That would be helpful if you had a motion.
Make a motion that the staff drafts a letter that reflects the sense of the council.
I'll second that.
And we would do it by circulating a draft and then if, unless there's some objection, the mayor will just sign it. We don't have to vote on it. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, good. Councilwoman Cumbah? Aye. Councilman Pardon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Mayor, if I could just clarify, one announcement was made about the lease agreement. Just wanna just make sure everyone knows, in my announcements, I'm gonna make sure it's clear, but we are changing our October meeting, our first meeting in October, from the 5th to the 6th. So it was said the 6th, but I wanna make sure everyone knows that's a Thursday, the 6th at 5:30. And that's in, so that we can recognize Yan Khor.
But we're not gonna tell Baron Collier. Cause we keep.
Yan Khor, yay, okay.
All right, thanks, Jesse.
Thank you.
Consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
You have a second?
Second.
Any comment on it? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Fred has an issue?
Oh, no, no, that's okay. I seconded, but I don't think the mayor heard it, so.
Oh, so no, Fred seconded.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cumbah?
Aye.
Okay, 10A rail to trail. My comment is that $7 to $18 million a mile puts that way out of my ballpark. I won't even put it on my radar, that, that type of thing. So anyways, any discussion on it?
Well, I, I think the, the, the green sheet, the way the staff outlined it, pretty much lays out what the question here is. As you, as you well know, that the Benita Springs and Estero financed a study on rail-to-trail kinds of concept. And we had a preliminary draft report that was presented at a public hearing some time ago. And this council has never, in my view, reviewed it personally and at least made some comments of what they thought about the, these were concept kinds of proposals. And I, and I think Arlene can, she's done a little investigation and MPO is asking for some kind of a commentary from the individual, the individual cities that are involved. But the point here is, I'm not suggesting that we go in a certain direction here. I think it's just that the council has some unfinished business here that I think would be helpful if we addressed it. And they have arranged to have a presentation of this study where we could talk about it in a future meeting. So that's the point of just getting it started. And I think Arlene has some comments about it.
Additionally, I think that at this time, they're asking the public to provide their comments. And Councilmember Cumbah had asked that we display that information on our website and get the word out through our communications department so that the public has a chance to put their input as well. I, I was also asked to reach out to village manager Steve Sarkozy. And at this time, the village has not taken an official position on which alternative. They are supportive in general. But then they had just asked if we forward whatever decisions rendered by council, Steve Sarkozy will update the village as well on, on whatever direction we go. But October 6th would be when we could get into a more in-depth conversation and there'll be a presentation by MPO. But I think in the interim, we wanted the opportunity for the residents to get the word out a little bit more.
Okay, you do take care of that?
I, I think we could do that by general consensus. If you're comfortable, we'll go ahead and start advertising, work with communications department to get the word out. And we've already prepared for the October 6th presentation.
Okay, all right. With everybody fine with me?
And I, I know that John has told, John Delmar has said that the issue of motorized scooters and bikes, that's a federal, oh, I'm sorry, yes. May, Mr. Mayor, may I speak?
No.
Okay.
All right, let's move along here. We could, you're gonna, you've got a long ways to go with that. 11A, that's a lot of.
All right, this is the first reading of the, of an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, amending the Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter 3 Development Standards, Section 3-263 Bicycle Facilities and Pedestrian Facilities, Division 6 Open Space Buffering and Landscaping, and Section 3-535 Piping Material for Use and Right Ofways, and Chapter 4 Zoning, Division 18 Home Occupations and Subdivision 37 Subordinate and Temporary Uses, Subdivision 3 Mobile Food Vendors Providing for Conflicts of Law, Severability, Codification, Scrivener's Errors, and Modifications That May Arise From Consideration of the Public Hearing.
Motion to move to second reading.
Second.
Any other comments? Roll call, please, Debbie.
Councilwoman Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cumbah?
Aye.
All right. City attorneys' items, do you have any?
I don't have anything except an update tomorrow because of a pre-existing conflict in this budget season. I will not be able to attend the meeting. My partner, Matt Repstorff, will be attending in my stead, so please give him a hard time.
Yeah, okay. Oh, yeah, city managers' items, lobbying and budget. Lobbying, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. As we had reported a few, a couple meetings ago, our current capital strategies, our current lobbyist is retiring. We wish her the best. But at this point, we have prepared a scope, a draft scope, a general for you to review. This does provide that the city council would be seated as a selection committee. So this is the general ideas of, we wanted some feedback from council and if you're comfortable with the scope of services, we would then work with the legal department to add the rest of the requirements for our regular request for proposals. Once we're ready to advertise, we will send out an email to all of council and that is when the, lack of a better word, cone of silence begins. So there should not be anybody who would be interested in being the lobbyist reaching out to you directly as you'll sit as a selection committee. If they do have a question, please redirect them to staff. We would be able to issue an addendum with whatever questions they have so they would be viewable publicly to any, any respond, potential public respondent.
I've got a question about twice a week they're gonna report?
So that's typically what happens now during session is you get an email from Ashley right around twice. This is, some of these criteria are very similar to the previous scope you had. Also recently, Lee County issued a new scope of services. So some of the, some of the information was taken from there in the scope of services.
So who reads that? You, you have to, you, you get to read it twice a week?
As, as do all of you as well, together. We get to read it together, as does Derek.
Yeah, haven't you seen it?
We all get to read it, yes.
It just seems like a lot of, of course, I know there are 90, 60 days.
Right. Yes, depending, and then if there would be a special session, there would be the same amount of coverage as well.
60 days, okay. Anything else? Oh, yeah, now we got Lisa.
So I, I do need a motion actually on the scope, the general scope, if you all comfortable.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mayor, Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cumbah?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
At this time, I'd like Lisa to come forward. We're gonna give you our last general update as tomorrow evening at 5:01 PM will be the first budget hearing. So Lisa, there's a few items she's gonna review with you as well. And then this will be the time of any last-minute discussion points. This would be the good time to bring them up for the budget.
Okay, hey, Lisa.
Good evening. What we have planned for you all tonight is to walk you forward from our original budget numbers that we presented to you in July 20th to what you're gonna see tomorrow night and walk you through any adjustments or changes and provide some other comments and data y'all requested along the way. The first slide is budget revenue changes. What we're again trying to do is we provide you with the July 20th, that was your first budget draft number. And then we're gonna summarize all the changes that we have seen be approved and be discussed as we've moved forward. From a revenue standpoint, the only change to our next year's budget is a grant that you all approved on August 3rd. This is a grant for East Terry Street Multi-Use Pathways. As you all can see there in the notes, this is a reimbursement grant. It will fund a capital improvement project and it has no city matching requirements, my favorite type of grant. So, and then it gives you a new total revenue. Just to, you'll see in future slides, but the neat thing about these reimbursement grants, we have to budget revenue and then we budget expenses, but they have a net zero effect on city funding and on their budget as a whole. Budget expenditure changes. Again, we're gonna start from our July 20th number for total expenditures of the city and then we're gonna walk you through the changes, most of which you've seen before. In the general operating fund, we have our changes to celebrate Benita and animal control services. That was a positive, a reduction that we received from our quote from Lee County for contractual services. Under special revenue, building contractual services, the manager referred to this at our last budget discussion, we received an adjustment to a cost from the vendor there. Slight adjustment, if you will, but we wanted to incorporate it into the budget. And then from capital project standpoint, we have two changes. The East Terry Street Multi-Use Pathway, again noted there, 100% grant funded, but it does need to be increased so it's in our expenditure so we can disperse that money as, as the project progresses. And then West Terry Street, Old 41 Quadrant Road, that's funded by the general fund. And that summarizes all the expenditure changes that we've had thus far.
All right. West Terry Street, Old 41, that's a roundabout?
Yes. No, that's, I'll let the, the manager speak to the location of that.
So that would be, there was a discussion by council to look into the possibility of another network that could be added to provide some egress to those businesses that were there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. The net effect on available funds, as we always try to segregate out the general fund, operating fund, when we look at the net effect of revenues and expenditures. So what you're gonna see there are a summary of the decreases in expenditures and then the increase in the capital transfers. That one CIP will be funded by the general fund. And then special revenue. Special revenue funds, you'll see the increase in revenue, that's the grant funding, and the increase in expenditures, again, the building contractual expenditure change, and then the increase in the capital transfers, which you can clearly see the grant revenue[1674.21] coming in, the grant expenditures going out, and that has a net zero effect on the city funds. And then there, we summarize the impact on the unassigned fund balance in the general fund, and the impact on restricted funds for special revenue. And that's a summary of your changes in the net effects of the available funds. Projection of unassigned fund balance. These numbers have not changed since you've seen them last, but we do like to show them to you each time that we discuss the budget, just so that we can just make sure we're all clear about where we think we're headed. Again, we start from July 20th, unassigned fund balance, and then we add in, as we talked a couple meetings ago, this current year, we've still seen some positive economic trends. We are pleased to see that. Now, that has not changed the state's position on our next year's revenue, but it did give us more money heading into this year. So we wanted to make sure you all had as close accounting to the funds that we're collecting in the current year, so that then you roll, carry them forward, and they're available to help you next year to provide for your budget needs. We also have the impact of proposed budget changes there, those are a net effect, and then we made an allocation to the disaster reserves of $1 million. So that reduced our unassigned fund balance. And here's what we're projecting as of today for, for next fiscal year, and as we always talk about that footnote there, we're projecting more than 12 months into the future. So we know this is not going to be exactly how it is, but once we close our fiscal year that we're in, we'll be able to firm up that number, and we present that to y'all as it comes available. Did you have?
All right, go.
Yeah, no, you can, you can stop.
No, go ahead, and I'll, I'll ask my question at the end.
Okay, okay. Yeah, we have a slide for that.
I know.
Okay, great. And we can come back to any of these if you, if you think you need them for any of the future discussions as well, please. Now, we're going to talk about the city's taxable value. There were some, some comments at our last budget discussion, and we wanted to make sure we provided you some, some detail. We obtained the property tax roll from the property appraiser and did some analysis, and we wanted to walk y'all through that. This is our total taxable value. As you can see, real estate property is our primary portion of our taxable value. There's also some personal property taxes from businesses and things of that nature, and centrally assessed property, that's typically railroads and things like that. So that brings us to our total city value, taxable value, and then you can see our, our increases, about 15% this year. We also like to look each year at the real estate property by category. This is very important because it, these different types of categories move different ways as a result of economic changes and pressures or whatnot. For example, the value of residential property will move in completely different ways than the commercial, and different pressures will happen on it. So we're 90% residential. So be that as it may, it's not something we can control, but we do like to watch it because we like to see. They do make predictions about where residential will go and where commercial will go, from a perspective of valuing into the future. Cities, real estate tax value, taxable value. What we did, based on some comments we had last time, we took a look at our, our total taxable value from our property tax roll, and determined that 39% of our taxable value is homesteaded property, and 61% is non-homesteaded property. Now, both of these types of property are limited with respect to the annual increase in taxable value only that they could have each year. As the note indicates there, and we're all familiar with, homesteaded property can only go up a greater of 3% of a consumer price index. Last year, it was around 1%, this year, it's 3%. Non-homesteaded property, and that includes residential and commercial, can only go up 10%. If you're like me, when you look at those two things, you think, okay, well, then how did the city's total value go up 15%? And how did Lee County? Lee County moved greater than 28%. And the answer is right there in that asterisk. When the real estate property is sold, it resets the taxable value. And in the current market, most values go up more than 10%. So when you sell it, the new, the people, the parcels that have gone up in the city of Benita Springs, and in Lee County as a whole, the only way they would go up more than 10% for their taxable value only is because they've sold, and the new owner is then impacted with the new value, and it's based on his current transaction that he had.
And that's based on last year's value at the end of the year.
It's January 1st value. And, and the neat thing, and I actually called and spoke to a person down at the property appraiser. We find this exciting, I know, laugh, this is my one exciting slide for the day. But they're mates, too. She, the property appraiser's office said that they're getting so many calls about this because they want to know, they know the law says 3% or 10% is the maximum, so how could it be moving up more? And it's because when it sells, it will take, she said, on average, it's up to two years before it starts locking into the 10% because of the timing of the tax rolls. You sell your property on a certain day, it doesn't get on the tax roll at all, or value assessed rather, until January 1st is the set of the thing. And then it's November when you get your trim notice, then you apply for your homestead or your lock sets in. So it's, it's probably about, on average, two years of tax bills before you actually see these locks being revealed in themselves. And then as you, as you're held to 3% or 10%, and that the market value continues to grow, as we love to see it do in this area, so you end up with a gap. Your market value, or just value, as they call it, is way up here, your taxable value only grows very slowly, so you end up with a big difference. Well, when you resell it, it resets, and the new person goes up to the market value, and that's where they start from, the transactional value.
Now.
That was very interesting.
I think, did you investigate trusts? Because I got my trim notice, I live in Mom's apartment, and her trust, and I think I've taxed went up a lot more than 10%.
Bring it in, let's look at it. I always love to look at those things.
That's all right, you know, I'm just, a trust, a trust, a non-homesteaded trust.
We got to get on TV or something.
Do you have any rough idea what percentage of the properties sell a year?
They have that on, on the rolls. She is, the property appraiser contact I spoke to, and you think about it, like, Lee County moved as a whole over 28%. That was a great volume. That had to be a significant number of transactions, and it's not necessarily the number of transactions, it's the value of those transactions. And they have to be a large value of, of total transactions to move, in order to move these numbers this way, when everything that's staying didn't change ownership, just goes to 10. It's a large volume, and it's not necessarily the number of transactions, it's the value that they're selling for. Yeah, we, we're going to come to another slide about our new construction. We've had some, some significant value items come online as well, so. The city's new construction value. We wanted to clearly show you all what's, that's been trending the last couple of years, 2.4%. I think that's not bad, considering where we are as our, close to maturity and close to build out as a city. So that has been consistent, that's a good thing, that that hasn't fallen off. And then our next two slides, I have to thank Community Development, they graciously provided this for us. So I apologize, the numbers at the bottom are a little hard to see, but yeah, I think it's graphically depicted there. So what we have, this slide is single-family residence permits issued. Now, this is the very first step in a construction of a home. They pull the permit, this is before anything happens. The next slide we're going to see is when they get to the end of the construction life, because that bears more on our property tax rolls. But here, what's so interesting to see is, as we've talked about, I think it was last meeting or meeting before last, July, we saw a significant drop in permits issued for single-family homes, as you can see there significantly, and August didn't see an improvement. And we're not sure that, we think it's going to stay at a lower level. We're just, that's what we're hearing, that's what we think, and we're preparing for. As you've seen in our budget, we've adjusted our estimated revenue down for building permits, and we're prepared for that. We have a reserve set aside in that fund as well, so, but we just like to let you know that we are watching that, and that's what we're seeing here. Now, this is the single-family residence for certificate of occupancy. This is at the very end of, of construction. They've already built the home, someone's come and inspected it, and it's now certified to be occupied. That's when it goes to the property appraiser, it first starts the process of getting on our tax roll. As you can see here, they haven't dropped very much now, which means we will, this one will drop at some point in the future, it just lags behind the other one, because where it is in the construction, single-family home construction cycle, life cycle. We wanted to touch on, again, the strategic priorities. These are what we've presented to you, or what we include, what we use for the 22, 23 draft budget, it's based on these. And we also, as we were inquired about how the budget's funding dollars lined up to these priorities. So what we've done, we've taken the capital improvement plan, and we've categorized them by the strategic priorities. Now, please keep in mind that some of our projects cover multiple strategic priorities. But these are where they're classified in the budget, where we think they primarily have the biggest impact. And as you can see, they're pretty, pretty easily line up. We always, when we're looking at capital improvement plans, because we have so many grant dollars that we carry over, and projects that we carry over, because capital improvement projects can't be done in one year, so we carry those over. So what's so important to include the budgeted, anticipated carryover, and also this next year's budget. So you can see, those are lining up fairly well, especially at the first two or three. Now, this next slide is what staff attempted to do here, and this is where, at the end, we'll have your feedback, your questions, and we're looking for your direction. What we attempted to do was do a draft update to the strategic priorities based upon the discussions that were had last time. It's proposed right now that there be an effective date of next, beginning of next fiscal year, October 1st, 2023. We have highlighted in red, and we've also made some notes about the changes, the way we understood them at the last meeting. The item three is, would now be community aesthetics, and as you can see the note there, that was previously number five. Then number four, environmental protection, you can see the asterisk there, it remains at number four, but it did move ahead of strengthening and enhancing city finances, just as we shuffled the other ones around.
And Lisa, if you could go back to the previous slide, what's interesting is, if you look at the percentage of funding, it actually completely aligns with that, with that, putting it in that category, those categories.
Yeah, it does, it does.
Because you would still be at, improving your stormwater would be 47%, transportation 35%, community aesthetics 12%, and then the environmental protection at 2%.
Yeah, it does. It's amazing. We were all heading in the same direction, and this just proves it.
Just a question, so other capital projects equals economic development in the?
Not necessarily. Other, other capital projects are government responsibilities, facilities, city hall, those items, IT, web-based protections, so.
New vehicles, things of that nature.
Vehicles, the vehicle. So basically, able to conduct city, needed expenditures that you have for city business.
Yeah, renovation, yeah.
Yeah, but they don't readily connect to a strategic priority necessarily.
Okay, thanks. Yep. So, and then currently proposed number five would be strengthening, enhancing city finances, which was previously number three. And we just, we, we hope we understood that correctly, we're looking forward to your feedback.
And just to clarify, I think we understand that that would be the strategic priorities moving forward, but for purposes of the budget, this budget was based on the original strategic priorities.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just have one comment. I, I prefer this ranking, but I, I don't like the term community aesthetics, because what that really includes is, like, a lot of the things we're doing in our parks are really enhancements to the functionality of that. So I, I think for, for the residents to really understand what we're trying, it seems like we're just painting the buildings or something, the word aesthetics.
We could add quality of life to it as well.
Or amenities, maybe, community amenities.
Amenities or something like that. I just think it's the wrong, I know what you mean, but I just think it's an imprecise term, and I can't think of one that's better, but if, the staff usually comes up with.
Fred.
Why don't we use what Amy said, enhancements of.
Enhancements. We can look at. Quality of life, yeah, you bring it forward, but I mean, you, you, I agree with moving it up, because so, for so many years, we've just put it on the back burner, and we're, and we're actually doing this, so I think we should recognize that it's very important to us, and we're very supportive of the staff effort to bring this to a higher priority.
Lisa, I noticed that there's increased amount of repairs and maintenance in the budget, which I approve of, rather than buying new all the time, we can get some more life out of existing aesthetics, I guess, maybe, maybe that's part of that. I appreciate that.
Okay.
It's not worn out yet.
[laughing].
Keep on going. Have we got other things to do?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. So Lisa, we did an allocation, I believe it was $1 million extra for our hurricane fund, and more than once tonight, we heard about inflation. Should we increase the budget, you know, maybe a half a million dollars, just to account for projects that go over, or if some project comes up that we want to do that we haven't planned for?
Well, you'll still have your funding in your unassigned fund balance, and so if you recall when we did deal with Hurricane Irma, there, we did have to do budget transfers, which we can do for. So if there is a project that comes along that, that we need to make adjustments for, you do have the unassigned fund balance as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. I'd like to make a comment, going back to the parking spots on the three sides of the Banyan Tree Lot. You know, I think we're moving forward with the lease agreement with Barron Coier, it looks like we're proceeding down that road. And talking to Matt, the parking spots around the Banyan Tree Lot, to redesign those is going to take a little more effort than we would normally think because of some abandoned wells and so forth. I would like to see us put a half a million dollars additional into the CIP for purposes of starting the engineering and design work necessary to convert those parking spots. I don't want us to get into a position where, you know, Riverside, for, for example, Rooftop is opening next summer, and we decide that we want to start doing some work in the Banyan Tree Square, and that we end up taking out parking spots as part, as part of that overall project. I think we need to protect those businesses that are in that area, whether it's the bike shop, the fishing shop, Benson's, Chartreuse, whatever. I think we need to go ahead and at least do the planning and engineering work associated with converting those parking spaces to what DPZ had talked about. I'm not talking about doing anything else with the sheriff's substation or the lighting project, but I do think we need to focus on the, on the parking spot.
Mayor, has a minute?
Yes.
I mean, I, I didn't think we have come to any conclusions of what we want, we're going to do with that area, that DPC, or, or the proposal that it came for, the Banyan Tree. None of that plan has been fully vetted.
But we do know we're going to need to change the parking spots.
We do not, I don't agree that we know that.
Well, then you and I disagree.
All right, and, and, and we, as a council, haven't specifically analyzed that, and I don't think we have had enough input to see what, what we need to do there. So unless we have an agreement to what the, the plan is, I don't think that's a, a good way to proceed. And, and we could make a decision soon, but I don't think we should pick a part of any suggestion and execute it without having the total plan. That was the whole point of having us look at the total picture, and not just isolate the Banyan Tree or anything like that. So that's, that, I just think, bring it forward, have the, have, have the staff accelerate the decision-making, and then do it, and then if it comes out that we absolutely are convinced that no matter what direction we go, we put in the parking, then do it. But I don't think we should do it without finishing.
First of all, it's going to take some more planning and engineering to figure out even if, how much of it we can do. So what I'm suggesting is we invest the dollars now to figure out the, what has to happen in order to improve those parking places. I'm not talking about, you know, I doubt if we did it, that we could even start construction in the next fiscal year. It's going to be more complicated than that, but we're going to have to spend some money just to try to plan and engineer it.
I agree.
Okay, I happened to find two spotlights that go 32 feet in the air with a solar panel for $40. Okay, now, we could light up the Banyan Tree, for maybe $80, we could get four lights going up that are different colors for $40 on a solar panel. Don't have to run wires or anything else. So let's, let's look at this a little further before we make any commitments. Yes, Fred?
I, I tend to agree with both Chris and Amy, if that's possible, but I, I know this. Engineer and architect, you don't need 500 grand to design, and even get working drawings of that, that parking room. That's way, way, I would say, I think we need to check with Matt Feeney and some others and get a more realistic figure. We can possibly do that even before.
I think, to clarify, what Councilman Corey had a conversation with staff, and I think I might be able to help this a little bit. We had discussed that, as of right now, the, the plan was to provide a, a public workshop to get feedback, to, to work on the design, and I think what Councilman Corey was trying to suggest, that if, if there was a way as that design project simultaneously moved forward, if there was an opportunity to start the construction of the, I think it was construction, it wasn't just design.
500, I think is way too much.
There is a USGS well site that is on the property that has to be examined and looked at. I don't, we don't know yet the requirements of relocating that. It is in the line of where the potential parking might go. So I think what the question was, is Councilman Corey had asked staff, is. So I think what the question was, as Councilman Corey asked staff, is as we are simultaneously moving through the process, if there was ability in this fiscal year to start construction, if that's the direction we were going. Of course, all of these things have to be brought back. A design has to be brought back of the parking. An agreement with USGS possibly has to give, come back with the movement of the well. So there are many steps. I think what his concern was is making sure there was enough funds. So there is ability to transfer funds, or there also is the unassigned fund balance, and that could come forward as well. That's a policy called the council.
Okay, anything else?
What do we need to do to proceed with that?
Staff is looking into...
Well, if, well, I think is if, if, if you're asking for the transfer to happen now, I think you would need a motion. Alternatively, we're happy, as we move forward, there is a possibility of a budget transfer in the future from the unassigned fund balance, that those are the two options. But I think we heard that Council, Lot and Clear, you're very concerned about parking downtown. We have to simultaneously move forward with the public workshops, with the feedback to design the facilities where we're going to end up. Continue those conversations with the sheriff's office on the substation and also USGS. So, but sooner than later, you'd like to see parking.
Okay, and Mayor, Council report? Amy?
I have a couple of items. First of all, I went to two Horizon Council meetings, one an executive board and one a general meeting. And what was interesting is that the presentation for the general meeting was basically, the title, I'll read it to you, was Lee County's Role in Supporting Affordable Housing. But in fact, what that presented was Lee County's efforts to help people who are unhome, unhoused. It wasn't for affordable housing. And there is quite an effort that's being executed by Lee County's Human and Veteran Services, and they just presented it. So if anybody's interested in what they're doing in Fort Myers to try to keep people who do not have homes, where they have a, a very extensive support with services, and they're getting people off the streets in, in currently hotels or motels, and moving them from there into more permanent housing with a lot of supportive services. So it sounds, it sounded pretty good to me. And they have statistics about how they are working to have people off the street. So it's a positive for the region. The other thing, and another thing that I went to was the Blue Zones. It was billed as a commemoration meeting where they were celebrating a year where the entire southwest Florida community was certified Blue Zones community, including Bonita Springs. And we were given a certification award, which I'm going to pass along to everybody because we are a Blue Zones company, I mean, the community. And you could just pass it along or to, and, and look at it. And, or just put it up there. And, but I, as part of that presentation was celebration of all the efforts that have been done, was one by Sean Gibbons, our own Sean Gibbons, that was very extremely well received. And he did feature all the activities that we do for our multimodal paths and, and our commitment, our city does, but also individual homeowners associations, restaurants, schools. I think, I think all of our schools are now certified Blue Zones people. So he gave a lovely presentation that really featured the city in a very positive way. So I think we should mention him by main, by name for that great recognition that we have. As I said, we got an award, and they, and most of the things that they commented on were things that Bonita Springs had done, so we should feel proud about that. And then coincidentally, out of that was, I met a, a person by the name of Jim Burke, who was, is with the South Florida Regional Planning Agency. And he, in fact, he called me today because he offered, it was a little sketchy about what kind of activities that they are involved with, because we haven't been involved with that agency in a long while. But he offered his, the services to help or support any efforts that the city might want to have for infrastructure and assistance with grant making. And I just said, well, you know, we have a grant maker, a grant writer, and that he might want to just meet with them individually. And I can, I'm connecting them, him with, with, well, Arlene, and she's going to connect him with Ellie. But while I was discussing with them and trying to dream up kind of, or think about infrastructure that we might be working on, I didn't mention the Sun Trail, because that is a regional thing, that we require some cooperation between the very, Lee County and Collier County and, and the two municipalities. And he seemed to be interested in doing that. And he asked to have the materials that we saw today forwarded to him. And plus, if we did anything, which we didn't do anything, just to let him know what we're doing. And they, he, he would think he would like to follow it. So that's, that's what I, I know, I agree that I would do that. And I think that's, that's about it. So if anybody wants to have any more details about that, since we're not voting on any of these stuff, we can talk about it. But that's, that's what I did since our last meeting.
Okay, Chris, you want to try me now?
I'm good.
Fred?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. It was, a couple of things were announced at MPO Executive Committee meeting that I was at today. One was that Seminole Gulf has put in for a huge grant to rebuild the railroad tracks and all that. And MPO is supporting it. So that has some bearing on what Alex was talking about. The other thing that came out is, over the next five years, MPO is going to get a bunch of money. It's not, we, we haven't decided what we'll do with it, but I'm suggesting we, we try and get our share of it. Year one, they're going to get 10 million bucks roughly a year for the next three years. And it drops down to 3 million and something like 2 or 2.5.
Whose pocket are we robbing?
Well, no, it's just, it's money coming in from probably the state and the feds, my guess.
Very impressive, okay. Money, money, money. Okay, Fred.
I think Rick Scott said one thing that I agree with. He said he didn't agree with this deficit spending, but it was certainly his job to see the state of Florida got its fair share of it.
That's right.
So that, that's, wherever this money's coming from, we want to try and get some of it. The other, the other thing I was going to say is, I did participate in that. In fact, Arlene was on the call with me or on the Zoom meeting. Zoom meeting with Baron, Baron Donalds, our congressman. All the other cities in his congressional district were on the phone. And as near as I could tell, most of them only had one official. In fact, in one case, I think it was Marco Island, they had a staff person that was representing them. And it was general information, some of which we knew, but the, his belief is that the flood insurance, which is kind of in a lot of problems, and we're seeing big increases, that is going to get probably just re-extended as it is right now for another year or two. It's kind of like they kick the can down the road on social security every year. So, and that's what they're doing with that. He did indicate that there is going to be a lot of money available for infrastructure. And we hope to get, I made a point that we needed to make sure we get some of that in some cases, and that regional, regional projects would receive better receptions towards getting money than local projects. And I think, I think that's, that's about it. And so Arlene may have something she...
Thank you, Fred. Laura?
I'm good, thank you.
You're good. Mike?
Good.
For $40, I can light up half of that Banyan Tree with a solar panel. So we'll start there, okay. Anything else, public comment? Hey, Alex?
Yes, about a year and a half ago, I was on the Zoom meeting as a Rail Passenger Association meeting with Ray Lang. He's Vice President of Development for Amtrak. And basically what that meeting said, that the Floridian was coming down to southwest Florida. That's a, a daily passenger train, north and southbound, obviously. And that, the cost, Amtrak pays 100% of the cost of rail improvement, 100% of the cost of signal, you know, where the road and the track meet, you know, signalization improvements, and 100% of the passenger rail construction, a station, passenger rail station. They will also supply 100% of the cost of the engine and any passenger cars. And also, they will pay for the first two years of any shortfall in the fare box, after which there would have to be a state reimbursement. But here, with a population of 2 million people, I don't think that's going to be a problem. Usually, it's figured out that 10% of the population would use passenger rail service. So if you're looking at 2 million people, you're looking about 200,000 people in southwest Florida would be using the train. So that's it.
Thank you, Alex. Anybody else? Here we go.
Hello, City Council. My name is Kyle Moran. I first moved to Bonita Springs 30 years ago. And I spend most every day in the, the downtown. And I just want to thank you folks and the staff for your continued leadership in this city and in that area. It's really critical. And it's been tough, because there's just been a tremendous amount of information, misinformation in the community. So it's great to get good information right from the, from the source. And I think that was a pretty impressive presentation by the folks at Barron Collier. I think that it's clear that they, they really listened over the last year plus. They adapted. We also saw some real facts come out about how costs have gone up dramatically. We know interest rates have gone up dramatically. It makes it a lot tougher to finance construction like that. We know that, that, you know, there are always unforeseen challenges. We found a sewer main that was relocated under that site that they're going to have to deal with. But there's some interesting statement that they made, and I, and I wrote it down. It said, and I said directly to you, Mr. Mayor, we are here, we are not walking away. So we have a partner that listened, that adapted, and that stood by the city and this council as a partner. I think that's really critical. It's really critical for our downtown. That downtown, when it's activated, if it's activated, will benefit this community economically, culturally, socially, recreationally, as you point out, City Councilwoman Corumba. It's part of a long-term strategy, 20-plus-year strategy in this city, for which we spent tens of millions of dollars. But we got a quote today that gave us a report card on how we're doing. The city manager remarked that our own real estate consultant, CBRE, called that area "an unproven market." Can you imagine? That's the heart of our community, a place where we've put 50 million-plus dollars, a place that holds the fate of our community and its future. And an unbiased third party calls it "unproven." Why is that? And how does that change? Well, one of the critical issues is, every time a city spends a lot of money, the public spends a lot of money, it's typical that you have a private partner that comes along with you. And that the, the public can't do it all themselves, and neither can the, the private market. So it has to work together. And thankfully, it appears that we have a great private partner to help us with that. That's extremely important. One of the other issues that we have potentially is, and this gets some misinformation in the community too, is that we have a tendency to study things and not execute things. We talked, I mentioned in a meeting ago, that 41 quarters ago, the city council said that they were about to embark on a definitive plan for Bamboo Village, and we're still studying it. I was amazed, the city attorney enlisted five other attorneys to study this contract. That's great. But we run a risk of over-studying things and not executing things, and that's really critical. I think to Councilman Corey's point too, about investing in parking there. If you think the studies hold businesses down there hostage, because if, if people are investing, but you're going to come in and redo the roads and, and change things around them, it puts them in a tough position. So I hope that we, we do our studies, but we also move forward and we execute. And we realize when we evaluate these things, there are tangible considerations, and there are intangible considerations. What will that project do to help activate our downtown? It's going to help us in a lot of ways. Thanks for your continued leadership, and let's move forward positively.
Evening, Council. Mr. Mayor? I wasn't going to say anything this evening, but listening to Kyle, he's such a good speaker.
Is that your name?
Sorry, Nigel Fulick. I apologize. Thank you, Councilman, resident and operate the business here in Bonita. The comment of the value of parcels have increased dramatically. Well, the reason that they've increased dramatically is because of the good faith of business owners and citizens in our community, local people who believe that this council is going to push forward and finally do what other councils have failed to do, and bring forward a project that our founding members of this community envisioned over 20 years ago, before we were a city. And I think that this council really wants to keep that in mind. Secondly, the, the 120 long-term rental units that are going to be in there, the way that that's been envisioned is appropriate and proper. But more importantly, when we talk about affordable housing, I really care about affordable housing for young people, our young professionals who live here and work elsewhere. So the fact that we'd have 120 long-term rental units proposed for Bamboo Village are exactly what we need to attract those young singles and couples to Bonita, and give them the opportunity to live in the town that they work in, and create more business. Thank you.
Thank you, Nigel.
For the record, my name is Jim Magnus. Good to see you all, Council. Our family is spending a ton of money in downtown Bonita Springs with Rooftop at Riverside, Food Truck Park. And I just wanted to echo the comments from Kyle Moran and from Nigel. It's important that, when you do studies, that you go and you do something about them. If you're not going to do anything, that's fine, make that decision. But please, do something quickly, especially on the parking side of it. I don't, I would hate to see Rooftop at Riverside open, and then all of those parking spots are all completely gone because we're doing some development on it. So please, do take that into consideration when you go and you look at this. And you've got such a great opportunity, you've got a great downtown, and you really have a lot of great things going on. Barron Collier is going to be a big advantage for the rest of that downtown, and is going to get other business people like myself and our family to go and to do additional development in that area. So please, please seriously think about those issues. Appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anything else? Regent?